...now is District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl. Mr. Rosendahl, welcome to Council Week in Review.
Thanks for having me here.
Venice known worldwide as an open-air, virtual, year-round carnival with free admission. The ordinance here is not so much about behavior really, as it is limited space, isn't it?
It's a combination of issues, but we're looking at over 200 spaces so we can keep it in some kind of an order that works for everybody.
Now, the situation isn't who would be allowed to sell or perform along the Venice Boardwalk. That's been going on for years. Give our viewers maybe a little bit of history over the past year or so as how this debate has evolved.
Well, first of all, it's been going on forever because Venice Beach is the most exciting, eclectic, everything-goes kind of a beach in the world. So you have all kinds of issues all the time. This particular ordinance that we hope to have in place by the weekend of the big summer kickoff, Memorial Day weekend in the end of May, gives us an opportunity to put some order in place. The biggest issue the merchants had were illegal merchandise being sold on the other side of the boardwalk, which was the west side. Then there were issues of homeowners and renters who lived in the neighborhood who felt the sound at certain places was just intolerable, and they had problems. There were performers who had problems because they wanted to do their performing. We had vendors who had product they wanted to sell that were also concerned, and we had the overall issue of how does everybody work together? You know, the vendors, the local merchants in their business, the performers, the entertainers, and even the free speech advocates, plus the community. So you're looking at how to get all the stakeholders on the beach in some kind of a harmony so that the summer experience, which is the biggest part of the Venice Beach moment, goes well.
Looking over some of the notes of the ordinance as you've constructed it, you referred to the P-zone and the I-zone. Why only two zones? Did you consider more, and exactly what are they?
Well, there's three zones. I mean, there are some areas where the decibel level can go. The Ps and the Is, you have an explanation of how they operate, but they basically allow us to set some order within the organization. You know, this came about by a judge named Ferguson, who was dealing with the constitutionality issue of one of the vendors there. It was an ACLU suit, and we did not want a new ordinance to go in place that then would be thrown out again and have constitutional muster issues. So the judge spent a whole year with all groups trying to come up with something that would work for everybody. So this is a product not just of our city, but of a judge who understands constitutional law, with the hope that constitutionally it will stand. The big challenge for us is how to explain this to everybody involved in the issue. The LAPD is going through training on it right now. Wreckin' Park as well will be doing it, and I need to find the funding sources as we go through the budget process so that people can understand this ordinance so that it will work for everybody.
Let's go through a couple of the basic points. For example, about commercial vending. No commercial vending allowed in these designated zones. How will commercial vending be defined?
First of all, commercial vending are the vending that you see right now on the east side of the boardwalk. These are people who have business licenses, people who pay their employees, live within the rules that city sets up for any merchant. The merchants or wannabe merchants on the west side are basically, some of them, carting the same stuff that's on the east side, selling it at huge, reduce prices, don't deal with business licenses, don't deal with any of the real aspect of the competition between businesses. The businesses were in an uproar over what was happening at Venice Beach, and that was one of the issues. But there was also the uproar from neighbors hearing sound that just drove them nuts, decibel levels that were just out of control. And then you saw some battling going on, be it verbal or even more serious than that, among performers and some of the special craft people. When you have such an open, free expression beach, which Venice Beach is, you're going to have issues. So the hope is that this new ordinance will give everybody an opportunity to exist side by side. You know, Channel 35 covered all the town halls we did on this, and I know a lot of the viewers watched three, four hours every time we held a town hall. Fifty, sixty people speak from all parts of the spectrum. And frankly, I listened to everyone, and this is a crafted version that hopefully will satisfy as many of the issues as possible.
Well, you mentioned crafting some decibel levels, for example. You also have enforcement timing, don't you, in terms of what can happen at what time of day?
Yeah, and those timing issues in decibel levels are part of the instructions that will go out with Wreckin' Park and with people who pick up an application and get a license. It's $25 to get that, $10 to renew it annually, but it's nominal. You collect the data on the individual, you understand where they're coming from, and then you figure out what category makes sense in terms of where their products should be. You know, some people create their own goods, others really don't, and just put a little stamp on it and pretend it's their own goods. You have to go through those issues so it isn't causing undue competition on the legitimate merchants on the other side. But these processes will be worked out, and frankly, they'll be fine-tuning and tweaking needed as time goes on. My hope is this, is that over the next year, as we go through this and issues arise, that we're able to modify it, make it a living, breathing kind of an ordinance, not as totally strict as life is with laws, but appreciates the ambiance and the influence of just that great opportunity that people have. You know, Venice Beach has more tourists coming than anywhere else in Southern California, maybe rivals with Disney a little bit, or maybe the Hollywood area, but over a million people come to our beaches. And people come from all over the earth to walk one time on Venice Beach, to look around, get a sense of it, and then move on with their life. Others, of course, come more often, and others end up living there. So it is a place to go to. It's world-renowned, as we all know, and we're very proud of our beach, and we hope that this will continue to make us proud of everything.
Amen. One of the very first places I ever took my parents when they came out to visit. Bill, you mentioned a minute ago enforcement. Is this strictly an LAPD enforcement issue? And by the way, what about the penalties if people don't comply?
The penalties are you're no longer allowed to go on the beach if it's just a simple violation of the rules. If you get into confrontations with others, you can obviously be subject to some criminal penalty issues. The LAPD deals with the criminal side. Wreckin' Park, that's the recreational park department, deal with basically all of the aspects of this ordinance, where you go in to have your slot, you know, what you need to do to be within compliance. It's a Wreckin' Park issue. But if things get out of control and a person violates all of our other laws while they're there, then the LAPD steps in, and they're only brought in as a last resort, brought on by some element that nobody appreciates.
How long before the new regulations actually go into effect and become enforceable?
We said at the council, I said forthwith, and that means go to the mayor right away, get him to sign it, and once the mayor signs it, then it has to be published and then it has to be out there for 30 days. The goal is to get it in by Memorial Day weekend.
Before we let you go, a couple of other issues. This past week, the city's gang programs were put under the mayor's control. How important was that?
Yeah, well, look, the buck has to stop somewhere. By putting it under the mayor's office, it's the mayor's responsibility to carry it out. All of us are, will always be involved because we're the council. Council has a balance of power role here. The budget process goes through us, and when we moved it to the mayor's office, we want report backs, report backs, report backs, to see how it's going. And over an 18-month period, all that report back will give us comfort that everything is working well. Connie Rice was right with her study. There were too many silos in other parts of the government, right-hand, left-hand, not talking to each other. It needs to be consolidated. Everybody has to get on the same wavelength. The issue is so significant, and we, of course, care about intervention and prevention strategies. We talk about after-school programs, talk about jobs. We talk about how we can make the quality of life better for young people in our city. But to have the buck stop at the mayor's office is appropriate.
The other really big story, of course, of the week had to do with the water and power rate increase getting approved. Are you satisfied with the compromise that was crafted there?
Well, you know, I've got a lot of phone calls from my constituents and people throughout the city, very upset about their rates going up. I'm upset, too. I don't like to pay more water and power bill myself, but what really triggered for me was the experience of the old cable plant. I hate no cable. I was in the cable business for 22 years. I can tell you about cable. It does get old. Some of our plant out there is 60 years old, built in the '30s. That needs to be replaced with the new technology of today. Infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure reinvestment is key for our whole water and power system. So we're doing it that way, and we're going to form a citizens oversight committee. Each council member will appoint someone that I hope, in my case, 11th, will be a pit bull, scrub the numbers, find out the details, see that they're accountable. We want that rate increase to go directly into that infrastructure development. We want to see progress reports, and we will see progress reports. I think David Nahai is a superior choice for general manager. The mayor picked a great guy. I think Nick Petouris, who's chair of the oversight committee, another mayoral appointment, is an incredible, tough guy with a sharp pencil and a sharp eye. So I have a good feeling about the department and its commission, and I also feel that our council oversight will be ongoing, and we will hold them accountable, and with the citizen layer on top, we'll also have the transparency needed. I think those neighborhood councils, and Solidad Garcia, and all those people that have come down have done a great service to the city by taking this interest on, discussing it, making it bigger and stronger so that the accountability could be better than it was. I think it's a good moment, even though none of us want to pay more.
Well, we've reached the checkout line in this section of the program, so I guess it's time to ask you, councilman, paper or plastic?
No more plastic. We want to do 25 cents. We just supported a motion out of Sacramento that talks about getting away from plastic. Right now, if you watch this and you have any plastic bags, put them in the blue bin, and we will recycle them. But 95% of the plastic doesn't end up in the blue bin, unfortunately. It ends up in our gutters, into our system, into our fish, and it's terrible. We have to deal with it. The legislation in Sacramento will address that issue, and hopefully, we will come to a day when plastic is something of the past, not the present. We need those canvas bags that you use, go back in and bring them back out in that bag. That's the best way, sort of a cloth bag.
District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl, after all these years of watching you sitting on the other end of this process, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
And thanks very much for having me.
And again, the vote to adopt new vending and performance regulations for the Venice Beach Boardwalk was adopted with a unanimous vote, and we would like to thank again Councilmembers Alakon and Rosendahl for taking the time to join us on this week's program. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. You can watch city council meetings live or view past meetings by going to the city's website at lacity.org and follow the instructions provided for video on demand. We invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., and on Sundays at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending April 11, 2008. On behalf of Randy Cox and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Pope. Joy, thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council Meeting for Wednesday, April 16th, 2008. We hope everybody got their taxes in yesterday, or got their extension for six more months. We meet here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340, every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by my colleagues, Council Members Richard Alacon, Jose Wezar, Tom Labange, Jan Perry, Jack Weiss, and Dennis Zein. We're awaiting a quorum. Five council members are excused on city business lobbying both in DC and in Sacramento today. Those are Council Members Cardenas, Grohl, Hahn, Rosendahl, and Smith. We are just awaiting Mr. Parks, and Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Reyes to begin our council meeting, so I'd like to encourage the three of them, pursuant to council rules, to please come here as soon as possible. It is now a quarter past the hour, and we are expected to begin any moment. I want to greet our viewers on Channel 35, who watch us through the city's cable system. We broadcast live, and then rebroadcast twice in the evening. We are also available through webcast online at lacity.org. Great way to find out information for city services, to improve the quality of life, and to learn more about your elected officials and your city departments. We're also available through our web-based archives, where you can pull up past meetings, and click on different points of the agenda, and hear the council proceedings on each of those items. Lastly, we're also available through your telephones by calling Council Phone, a service of our city's Information Technology Agency. If you call 213-621-CITY, you can listen in to the City Council Proceedings, the full council, as well as any of our committee meetings. All items that come before us are on agendas, which are publicly made available, 72 hours in advance, 24 hours in advance for special agenda items. Those are available online at lacity.org, at our clerk's office, or here in council chambers. If you'd like to be heard on any of the items that are before us, please fill out a speaker card here, or in van eyes, where we have remote facility to hear testimony from our friends in the San Fernando Valley. If you would like to be heard for general public comment, you can also fill out a speaker card for items not on our agenda, but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. So again, we are just awaiting two more council members, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Parks, and we will begin. And they're on their way. So as soon as we have Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes here, we will begin the meeting. Thank you for your patience, as we wait two more council members to constitute 10 members, two-thirds a quorum, and we will begin. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. We now have nine members, just awaiting Council Member Parks to begin the meeting. Council Member Parks will please make his way down as soon as possible. We will have it formed, when we can begin our business. Are there any business announcements while we are waiting that folks have to make on their committees, or any other items before us? Mr. Labange?
Two o'clock this afternoon, the Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee will meet in the 13th District at Barnesall Art Gallery to discuss the very serious issue of murals. Murals throughout Southern California have been damaged and vandalized, and how they are treated, how they're respected, how they're restored, are all topics of discussion. Barnesall Art Gallery is located at 4800 Hollywood Boulevard, just west of Vermont Avenue, and it'll be a beautiful day to be at the park, but also to come here and comment on issues related to murals.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Labange, and thank you for your leadership on the mural issue today. So that Arts Parks meeting, which is usually at City Hall, will be at Barnesall Art Park. We are still awaiting one more member, Council Member Parks, and walking down, I've been told by the Sergeant-at-Arms, so we should be able to begin momentarily. Thank you for your patience.
Alacon, Cardenas, Grohl, Hahn, Wezar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zein, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zein moves, Mr. Reyes seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved. If we can run through the agenda, please.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are two items that have been requested to be continued. Item number three, request to continue that to April 25th.
Okay, colleagues, any objection to continuing item three until the 25th? Seeing none, that will be the order. Second item?
Next item is item number six, and that's a request to continue that matter to Friday, and that would be April 18th.
Okay. Any objection to continuing item six till Friday, the 18th, colleagues? Also seeing no objection, that will be the order. Next items.
On the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have been held, items one through eight, with the exception of three and six that have already been acted on, and items one and two are reports to be submitted.
Okay. We will hold one and two. Colleagues, that leaves four, five, seven, and eight. Anybody wishing to call any of those special? I'll call five special. We'll hear a couple speakers very briefly on that. We open it. Seven or eight? If not, let's go ahead and take the balance, four, seven, and eight, and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items nine through 39. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Any objection to consideration? Seeing none, those are before us now. Do we have cards on any of those?
Yes, on 10, 13, 18, 19, 20, 22, 23, 25, 26, 27, 30, 31, 32, 33, and 39.
Was that last one, 39?
Yes.
Okay. Specials, Mr. Zein?
Thirty.
Mr. Zein calls thirty special?
Thank you.
Are there specials, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and, on the balance, as soon as we get those on the computer, let's prepare the roll on those. And tabulate the vote, please.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
The next items, Mr. President, are the closed session items, items 40 through 45. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, let's hold those on the desk for closed session.
And yes, on item number 41, I believe there's a request from the city attorney to receive and file that matter.
Okay, is there any objection to receiving and filing 41, colleagues? If not, that will be the order of the day. Okay, if we can come back to our general public comment. We will take our general public comment right now, and then we will come back to items called special by cards from the public or council members. Our first speaker is Matt Dowd, if you'd like to come forward for our general public comment.
Thank you. First cab off the rank. I want to call the mayor of Los Angeles a liar and a cheat, first off. He lied to us about fixing the Venice problem for Michael Hunt, and he cheated and reneged on the settlement that the judge told him to put through, and he cheated on his wife, so he cheated on all the constituents that he said he was a family man when he got elected. Now, why aren't I getting a warning for slander for that? Because it's not, just like the other day.
Sir, I was going to say, if you could please keep your comments on items that are under our jurisdiction...
Oh, the mayor's not under your jurisdiction!
...and not of an exclusively personal nature. Thank you.
Anyway, you had the city attorney down here the other day, talking to Janice Hahn. She asked him why you're not settling the case, and he said, "We don't think shea butter is protected by the First Amendment," and as it stands there, it's not. But we've got a federal judge who says, "Oh, Michael Hunt," and she mentions him by name, "Michael Hunt's sale of shea butter alleges that it comes from West Africa, is distributed by Muslim mosques. It's inextricably intertwined with his political religious expression, therefore it satisfies the elements required in the Section 1983 case." So for your attorney to go against a federal judge, who already said Michael Hunt successfully stated the elements, and we've got your other attorney here saying, "Oh, you know, gee, we've been doing this for 20 years, and we still can't get it right," and then the judge says to him, "Well, you'll be doing it for another 40 years unless you simply place reasonable time, manner, and place restrictions on everybody." So you're going against a federal judge. I don't mind, because file this motion for summary judgment. Eric, I know you understand this kind of thing. It's a federal case. We're happy to go. The judge already said we're the winner, so eventually we'll end up in a damages trial, and Bernie Parks, you're going to have to find the $3 million to pay the jury award.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zuma Dog. After that will be Michael Carrion, and I know Mr. Dog has a letter from the Shaw family he'd like to share with us.
Yes. Thank you very much, City Council. I might make this through without crying. I think I might be able to, but I got an email from Jamil Shaw Senior today, and, you know, please, come on, you guys. Already, everybody's talking. I'm going to read a letter from Jamil Shaw Senior, and I'll wait till City Council can be quiet.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Hey, Zuma Dog, thank you for taking time to write and for posting all the information on your blog. It's going to be a fight getting Jamil's Law passed, but we're not going to stop until it's passed. We're now trying to get Jamil's Law on the agenda. That's more complicated than I thought. They say we need to get a council member to put in a motion to get it on the agenda. I left a message with Council Member Herb Wesson, but haven't heard from him yet. Looks like I'll have to call another council member in the morning. Have you logged on to jamilslaw.com? It's J-A-M-I-E-L-S-L-S-L-A-W, jamilslaw.com, and signed an online petition yet? So please go to jamilslaw.com, people watching on TV right now, and go sign the petition at his request. And it says here, "We're going to work on getting the law on the ballot for the voters to decide." That's Plan B. So I guess he's saying if he can't get the motion on this way, then he's going to put it on for the ballot at jamilslaw.com. Thank you for the kind words and all the support. It really means a lot to me and my family. Keep up the good word, Jamil Senior. So I say, Mr. Shaw, first of all, I know that there's a motion in here that's similar to this by a council member Zein, seconded by Smith. I know that there's politics involved, possibly we've got two different motions playing tug-of-war, but all I know is that you've never heard me come into council chambers and address these issues, because it's very covered well by the talk show hosts, and very... So I like to stick to other issues that get less coverage, but this is the tipping point, when guys like Zuma Dog, you know, very emotional testimony from Jamil Shaw Senior. So I'll be posting this. If you'd like to see the document finally, it's available at ladailyblog.com, along with Council Members Zein and Jamil Shaw Senior. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Michael Carrion is our next speaker. After that will be Olga Hall. Good morning.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion, and I have a few questions. I've been here a few times asking you guys to try to figure out what you want to do about the gang violence, yet everybody has their own opinion, and you're 15 members going in 15 different directions. If you guys all get together, you can solve this problem. It's not as difficult as it seems. If you guys just get all on the same page, sit down and listen to some of the people that come in here. I myself am an ex-gang member. I am here because I believe that I have to speak out for those people who are trying to get out of gangs, who are trying to change their lives. But we have politicians that are sitting here yakking away and don't hear anything that's being said. So they go away, wondering, "How do we solve the problem?" when people come here on a daily basis and give them a little advice on how to solve the problem. They're busy over here talking. They're busy over there talking. They don't listen. You cannot listen and carry a conversation on at the same time and get the same out of it. Yet, when they have their time to speak, they'll take 20 or 30 minutes, and blab, and blab, and blab, and nothing comes out of their mouth but a lot of words and a lot of hot air. You guys need to put some action behind your words. When I come here, and if you excuse the language, I pitch a bitch, I have a solution to the problem. I will take the time out of my day to solve the problems that I bring to you. The problem I have is that nobody listens. A comedian said it one time, "It's a bunch of titties here, who don't listen to what is being said, and they don't take it to heart. It's a public comment, nobody wants to hear it. They're reading the papers, they're doing everything else, and I just don't understand it. If you listen to the public, they'll tell you how to solve the problem."
Thank you, Mr. Carrion, and each time you come here, I definitely hear everything that you say, so rest assured. Olga Hall is our next speaker. After that is Arnold Sacks.
Good morning, councilmen members. I have some questions for you. Why did Board of Referees Powers give the Autry National Center a permit to build in Griffith Park? Why did the Board of Referees Powers did not listen to 112 letters that were against the building of the Autry of the Griffith Park in 1986? Why did Board of Referees Powers give the Autry a lease for Griffith Park land for $1 a year, for 50 years? Autry has been using this public land for free for more than 22 years. At this time, Autry is asking for a permit to more than double their building. This expansion will cost close to $200 million. Does that mean Autry wants to stay in Griffith Park for perpetuity? Will you or the Recreation and Parks Commission authorize the permit for the expansion, which means you, because you are in control of that department? So are you going to authorize it? I hope you know that Griffith Park land is not yours to give. It belongs to the people. That was the stipulation made by Colonel Griffith, for the people, not private entities. If Autry wants to expand, they can do it outside Griffith Park. They are a private business, and they do not belong in public land. It is your responsibility to protect the interest of the people, not the interest of private business. I know Mr. Labange wanted to meet with me because he had a disagreement on what I said last time, but of the questions that I just posed to you, which is that you disagree?
Thank you very much, Ms. Hall. Appreciate your testimony. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that, we'll go to the San Fernando Valley, and Sharon Brewer will follow Mr. Sacks. Good morning.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. President, for holding item number seven. I know you have a card on that one. Yesterday, there was a motion on your agenda relative to amending a personal service contract, but there was no DBA listed. And I'm curious, because there was a motion, there was an item on the Board of Public Works from March 26th, requesting the mayor to authorize the board to execute a proposed three-year personal service contract with Waste Management of California Incorporated, and enlisted a DBA, Simi Valley Landfill and Recycling Center. Understanding what a personal contract is, is with a personal contractor with an entity alone, why the DBA was there, but not on the item yesterday. According to the previous city council agendas, city financial policies are not applicable to the CRA. Our city financial policies apply to the Community Development Department. And I'm very upset with the language in item number seven, the fact that it includes a mid-city slash exposition funding, when nowhere in any of the legislation that was passed by the state, in any of the reference material that was provided in the department hearing, is the word "mid-city" used. The only time "mid-city" was ever mentioned...
Sorry, Mr. Sacks, we can't talk about seven in general public comment, so...
Well, you may not be able to talk about it, but I'm talking about the mid-city line that was canceled, that was supposed to... that was canceled, that was supposed to go from Western Avenue to San Vicente in Pico. Why there was a line going from Western Avenue to San Vicente in Pico, nobody seems to have an answer for that at the MTA or the County Board of Supervisors. By the way, I was looking forward to hearing your address or your motion, Councilman Parks, regarding MLK Hospital.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Sharon Brewer in the San Fernando Valley. After that will be Chuck Tenen here in council chambers. Good morning, Ms. Brewer.
Good morning, Sharon Brewer. Public comment. Daily News, today's Wednesday, April 16th, 2008, front page, Mayor Set to Hike Trash Fees Again. Before I get to that, I want to give some numbers about special event fee waivers. January 2008 to March 2008, we had $966,226 plus, because there's 14 no amounts. For April, from 4/1 to 4/15, we have $184,521 plus, because there's two no amounts. That equals, for just four and a half months, $1,150,747. For July 2007 to December 2007, you had $2,848,083 plus, because you had 10 no amounts given. Now, back to the increase. The mayor is expected to propose hiking monthly refuge collection bills next week to $36. Mayor says LA must try to raise a variety of fees, including those for trash collection, to close $406 million budget shortfall and meet his promise to expand the police force by 1,000 officers. Mayor's office said trash fee increase was intended to hire 1,000 officers, but city also needs more money to cover expenses associated with an expanded force, including overtime. I don't know where overtime has to do with hiring new officers, except when it comes to special events. If the city wants to continue force buildup, fees increases would be paid for by single-family homes and small apartment complexes. Fee increases would not apply to condominiums and apartment complexes with more than four units with private trash collection companies. If this trash fee increases to provide more police, everyone should pay, not just single-family homes and small apartment complexes. What happened to the $270 million from Prop S? Chief Bratton said it was for police. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker on general public comment is Chuck Tenen. After that will be Marco, excuse me, I can't quite read the name here. I think it's Pace.
Good morning, Councilmember President Eric Garcetti. I guess the rest of the council looks like most of them adjourned. It's dangerous to undermine the future of housing in this city. All of us are taxpayers and are stakeholders in this city, not just developers that keep poverty while they reap in millions in profits at the expense of the city. Laws are not enough, city laws. They need to be enforced, and we all need to be educated. Herb and Eric, TOPA, Tenant's Opportunity to Purchase, your leaders in this city, you get things moved forward and get things done. We need some help on that, discussion on that. Also, the MPLA of 1999, the closures, we need to minimize the unwarranted closures of our recreational areas that will directly impact this city. It will cost this city $100 million in local economy and loss of millions of dollars in city revenue. It's already happening. It's gotten to central California. They predicted a loss of $280 million in revenue because of these recreational closures. It's happening. Last Thursday in Hollywood, at the American Society of Authors and Composers, had their annual meeting in LA and their I Create Music Expo. Last year, they generated $863 million in revenue. They were given a proclamation by the City of Los Angeles to honor them, signed by the mayor. Yet, they sadly announced that the mayor could not show up. He had other things to do. Not one person from his office, or the city council, or the city was there to honor them. And Herb, you need to reconsider item number 07, 1914, be reconsidered to include low income. This city needs revenue. Well, you know what? Do the right things to get it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker is Marco in Savannah. Sorry, couldn't quite read the last name. Have to come forward. Good morning. Will you just give us your last names?
Excuse me?
What is it?
Marco Reyes.
Reyes, sorry. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Well, I came to the council in behalf of my parents, my mother, Sofia Reyes. We're having issues with the housing department. We came for help because we're trying to, we have a criminal case with the city attorney. We're trying to solve, you know, to try to do repairs for whatever we have to do. We came to Ms. Perry. My dad came two weeks ago, and she managed to set up an appointment in the city housing department with my father just to get him arrested. We don't know what to do. The criminal case is pending for my mom. I don't want, I really don't want my mom to go to jail. That's my main concern. I guess we're following a communist government. The housing department has their own Gestapo to try, I mean, LAPD wasn't going for it no more. I guess the General Services Police Department went and arrested my father. I don't know what to say. I came to you guys for help. What can we do? I don't know. I mean, you guys are elected officials, right? Should we go federal? I don't, I have no idea, but we need help at the city housing department. I mean, I'm pretty sure we're the ones that are paying property taxes for your guys' benefit. These people aren't even, some of them aren't even daunted. I mean, I don't, who could help me? You know?
Thank you. Where do you live, again, sir? Which council district?
The properties on 821 West 42nd Place, our own apartment building right here with Mr. Cruz, 323 North Savannah. And we came to Ms. Perry. She didn't help us at all. She actually managed, she actually had my father get arrested two weeks ago. They scheduled an appointment. If you try to speak, it's like, there's no First Amendment with her, when it's regarding her. I mean, what's your answer? What's your answer, man?
Wait, excuse me. The speaker should not be speaking directly to the council members. Should be speaking to the council as a whole.
Okay, as a whole. I came for help. She's not willing to help.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, sure. Ms. Perry?
I had no one arrested. If this is a property that was under the REAP program, there may have been an enforcement there. I don't know. I have staff here. We're free to talk to the gentleman here on staff, but I can assure you, I don't have the power to have anybody arrested. And so that is a misstatement of fact, which I'd like to correct publicly. And I will ask staff to go speak to him. If this is the case that had 80 REAP violations on it, I'm guessing this may be the case. There may have been enforcement by Building and Safety. To what extent that occurred, I'm unfamiliar with that, but, you know, there is a process. The process is called REAP, and there's a process that owners can pursue the REAP process and bring their properties into compliance. I am somewhat familiar of a case that did have 80 violations on it, which is highly unusual. We rarely get cases with that many violations attached to it. That may be the case. I don't know, but I will ask staff to go and speak with this gentleman and find out if this is the case. Thank you. But again, I assure you, I have nobody arrested, don't have the power to do that, not interested in having the power to do that. And actually, to put that kind of information out there in the form of untruth, I think is extremely irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will close our general public comment, and we will now return to the items called special. If we can take up the first item, please.
Mr. President, items one and two are still being held on the desk for the committee reports. Committee been on this morning.
We'll go to item five. We did have a public hearing on this, but we'll take the first two speaker cards on this, just to make sure people know Larry Gross is our first speaker on this item, and then Esperanza Martinez. The other names will be also read into the record, and appreciate other folks that are here as well, but we, unfortunately, under time constraints, do not need to have a public hearing, but I wanted to make sure we had at least a couple. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Larry Gross, Coalition for Economic Survival. Proposition 98 is an out-and-out doomsday measure. It's a deceptive scheme that wealthy landlords placed on the June 3 ballot. These landlords want voters to believe Proposition 98 is about eminent domain reform, but their goal is to eliminate rent control and tenant protections throughout California so they can make millions off the back of renters, seniors, disabled, and working families. For Los Angeles, if Proposition 98 passes, 627,000 LA renter households will wake up one morning in June and be left defenseless against landlord attempts to kick them out of their homes and onto the streets. Our city will be hardest hit. Proposition 98 also means no more eviction protections, no condo conversion protections, no tenant relocation assistance, no housing code programs. Proposition 98 will prevent efforts to produce affordable housing by outlawing inclusionary housing laws. It also undermines protections for our environment, our economy, our jobs, neighborhoods, and our home values. On the same ballot as Proposition 99, which provides voters true eminent domain reform by prohibiting government from taking a single-family home to give it to a private developer. This council needs to help in alerting voters that Proposition 98 is bad for renters and homeowners, bad for seniors and disabled and working families, bad for labor and business, bad for Los Angeles, bad for California. People need to remember that 98 we hate, but 99 is fine. No on 98, yes on 99. Save rent control, save our homes, save our city, save our state. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gross. Esperanza Martinez is our next speaker.
Good morning. Good morning, city councilmembers. My name is Esperanza Martinez, and I'm an organizer with the Bus Riders Union. I'm here today in support of the motion to oppose Proposition 98. I would like to commend President Garcetti and Councilmember Parks for taking leadership on this issue. As you all know, the whole country is experiencing a housing crisis. The whole world is facing an impending ecological devastation. In Los Angeles, people are losing their homes, and people cannot afford to pay rent. People living on the islands of Tuvalu are being forced to flee their homes because of rising waters due to global warming. We are very clear that Prop 98 is an attempt by land and building owners to weaken the government's ability to impose rent and environmental regulations. This is their efforts to protect their profits at any cost. Proponents of Prop 98 talk about the rights of private property. I ask you today, what about the human right to have a roof over your head? What about the right of the people in Los Angeles to live in dignified and healthy conditions? At a time when the mayor is aggressively moving forward to build the police department at any cost, we know it is that much more important to enforce and protect ordinances and services that attempt to defend the rights of the most vulnerable communities. Many of you consider yourselves environmentalists, thus understand that this measure is an attempt to gut all manner of laws and regulations that protect our environment and regulate growth and development. It could weaken our ability to further reduce greenhouse gas emissions, therefore restricting LA's ability to do its part in limiting climate change, all in the name of protecting private property and profits over people. The environmental threat that this proposition poses are too great, and we ask the city council to actively campaign against Proposition 98. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, that was a bonus hearing from our hearing in Rules and Government Committee. I want to read the other names into the record that are here on this issue, and our apologies for not being able to get to everybody today. Zuma Dog was here for general public comments on it. Robert Bustillo was for the proposal. Yvonne Michelle Autry, general comments. Eric Green for the proposal. Joseph Thomas from Los Angeles Community Action Network said against, but I assume against, Prop 98 for the proposal. Deborah Burton, also the same, and Carl Howard, HHCLH, was here. Mr. Weisar, I'd like to be recognized.
I want to thank you and Mr. Parks for bringing this forward. I think this is one of those referendums where not much has been talked about in the public sphere, but it will have tremendous impact on the way of life for thousands of Californians, perhaps millions. You know, I live in Bull Heights, a community, and represent Bull Heights, a community that has finally seen a tremendous amount of public and private investment that we hadn't seen anything like that in years past. But what protects people from continuing to live there, although we're getting new schools, a new police station, a new rail line, is that we have rent control there that will allow people to finally take advantage and be able to be the recipients of this new public investment. Something like Proposition 98 will allow protections, or we would take away the protections for these folks to live in these communities. And then also, you have in there an inability for our DWP and others to move forward with some environmentally friendly ways of getting energy to our communities. This, I think I'm fairly disappointed that we hadn't seen more discussion, but it has tremendous impacts on our way of life, things that this council has stood up strongly for in the past. And I hope that we take and do all we can as a city to oppose Proposition 98. And Council President, I know we usually do this to oppose or support propositions, but I'm wondering if we could also work out some language to actually have the city actively do something and put some resources so that we work in conjunction with those opposing this, so that we add to the resources and not simply make a statement that we're opposed to it. I think this is very dangerous for the city of Los Angeles, and we've got to do everything to oppose Proposition 98. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Weisar. We're not directly permitted, once it, you know, has moved forward on the ballot, to use any city financial resources, except through the League of Cities, California League of Cities, but a number of council members, just as a point of information, are raising money privately for that. So anybody who'd like to be involved with that, we'd be happy to make sure you're part of that effort. All right, with that, let's go ahead and open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
And we'll send that forth with. Thank you all very much. We appreciate the advocates' great work on that, and we'll certainly spread the word on information about those two propositions today. If we can take the commissioners up now.
First item, Mr. President, is item number one, and that's confirmation of Mr. Dave Sickler to the CRA.
Okay, Mr. Sickler, if you'd like to come up to the center table here. And I know today Chairman Wesson, in our HCD committee, led us in a unanimous vote for you. Why don't you give us a little idea of your background for our viewers at home and folks in the audience, and why you're interested in joining the CRA commission?
Well, I've spent about 32 of my years here in Southern California. Originally, I was the regional director for the National AFL-CIO for western states until 1997. I retired from the AFL-CIO and went to work for the State Building Trades Council, was Southern California Director for them until 2005, when I was appointed to the Board of Public Works. Was there until last June, when I took a position at the Department of Water and Power as Executive Director of Employee Relations, and have just recently left to take a position at UCLA as a State Director over workplace development and best practices for apprenticeship recruitment for both management and labor.
Well, thank you. I can speak for myself that you've contributed greatly to the life, not only of Los Angeles, but of, to the entire United States, and it's been a real pleasure working with you. I know for many of us, probably all of us in the council, over the past few years, and that you're going to add some great things to the CRA as well. So with that, if there's no other council members who wish to be heard, go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
When they like you, it's easy. So congratulations. Give a round of applause to our new commissioner. With that, if we can take up the second nomination, please.
And that's the confirmation of Mr. David Damon Figueroa to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority.
All right, Mr. Figueroa, thank you for putting yourself forward for the Homeless Services Authority as well. Why don't you give us a little bit of background as well and some of your interests? I know you went over some of it today in committee, where you received unanimous vote and support, but why don't you let the wider audience know your interest in serving on the Homeless Services Authority?
Thank you very much. I have personal experience being homeless. As a child, from the age of five to about 10, my father was, left the family, and we roamed around throughout Arizona as a homeless family, my mother and my three brothers. And it was very unstable. I think that experience made me the person that I am today. And I feel that I have come full circle, and I'm glad to serve. And I have a track record for serving in this community through boards like Clinica Romero, here in the Pico Union area, and Maldef. I have also served on organizations throughout the country, Dolores Huerta Foundation, Cesar Chavez Foundation. And I believe that this issue, the homeless crisis, is- Chavez Foundation, and I believe that this issue, the homeless crisis, is something that we need to deal with as soon as possible and bring as much awareness to this issue as possible as well. I'd like to also state that I am the Associate State Director for AARP California, where I represent three-quarters of a million members here in Los Angeles County.
Thank you, including a few members of the city council. So with that, if nobody else wishes to be heard, we want to thank you for putting yourself forward. It's a labor of love, and we really appreciate you bringing your personal perspective to this as well as the great work you've done here. So with that, we'll go ahead and make it official. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, is there a request to take item number 30 out of order?
No, I think we're going to hold that on the table for a little bit.
The next item then would be item number 10, and that was call special for cards.
And Mr. Dowd, item number 10. Matt Dowd here. Do not see him, so we will close the public hearing. Go ahead and prepare the roll on 10 and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, next item, please.
Item 13, call special for cards.
Okay, this is for Mr. Zuma Dogg. Mr. Dogg, are you around? The Dogg is not in the House, so we will go ahead and close the public hearing on that. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item 18, call special for cards.
I know Arnold Sachs is here. Mr. Sachs, if you'd like to come forward on item number 18, please.
Good morning again, Arnold Sachs. Very quickly on this item, just curious as to, I know that Lawa is a proprietary department, but I also know that the DWP is a proprietary department, and the city receives funding. I know that something air regarding a transfer from DWP. Does the city also get a transfer of funding from Lawa? Oh, thank you for your answer, Mr. President. The question would be, why not?
FAA regulations.
Oh, thank you for both answers, and thank you for your time. What a pleasure.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Sachs. That'll close our public hearing on that item. We can prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item's item number 19, and that was call special for cards.
Okay. George Abrams is our first, Abraham's, excuse me, is our first speaker. After that is Larry Marks, and third will be...
I'm George Abraham. I'm vice president of the Beechwood Canyon Neighborhood Association. I'm here to speak against the motion. The Hollywood Hills has one of the worst response times in the city for fire services. Relocating Fire Station 82 to Hollywood Boulevard and Van Ness Avenue, a quarter-mile further away, will increase response time. The major purpose stated repeatedly in all documents relating to Proposition F is improve response time. It is stated twice in the ballot summary, once on the description on the ballot, and three times in the body of the measure. It is also stated four times in the arguments in favor and twice in the rebuttal to the arguments against that were selected by the city clerk to appear in the ballot handbook. Just last month, we were bombarded with Proposition S television commercials featuring Fire Chief Douglas Barry, in which he states, quote, "Every second counts. It's all about response time," end quote. But now, the fire department is arguing that since most calls are to the southeast, that the station should be relocated in that direction. This is a fallacious argument. People do not suffer harm on a probabilistic basis. We all burn, bleed, and suffer at the same rate. We all deserve adequate response time. It was also suggested that we should settle for worse response time because then there would be extra money for Fire Station 76. But this is not 76's bond measure. The voters are told that this is for 82. Proposition F states, quote, "Once project completion for all projects is assured," end quote. This means that we must have improved response time first, even if we have to use all the funds. Costs rose because the oversight committees botched handling. Even though the oversight committee was well aware of the sole purpose for relocating a site, they fumbled repeatedly. They purchased two sites that violated law, and then they halted acquisition of Florentine Garden Site.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, we have the two-minute clock to stay as fair as possible, but we let folks finish their sentence and their thoughts, so thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony.
There really can.
Okay, if there's anything written you'd like to turn in, just give it to one of the sergeants-at-arms.
Attorney counsel.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Larry Marks is our next speaker. After that is Missy Kelly. Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning, Mr. President. My name is Larry Marks, and I'm the president of the Beechwood Canyon Neighborhood Association. Our membership consists of about 300 homes in the Beechwood Canyon, which is one of the several Hollywood Hills communities that are served by Fire Station 82. The avowed purpose of Proposition F was to improve fire department response times to areas where such response times exceeded the fire department's own standards. I think we've all lost sight of the second half of that sentence. According to the fire department's own figures, Station 82's response times to 90% of the area it serves meet or exceed the fire department's own guidelines. The only areas served by Fire Station 82 where its response times are longer than those guidelines are the Hollywood Hills communities, such as the Dells, the Oaks, Mulholland and the Sign, and Bronson Canyon and Beechwood Canyon. Yet the new location proposed for Fire Station 82 moves the firefighting facilities further away from these areas. The argument is being made that the proposed relocation of Fire Station 82 will improve response time to almost all of the areas served by the station. This argument is dishonest. The areas where response times will be improved are already meeting the fire department's standards. The proposed relocation will only worsen an existing service problem to the more distant hillside areas. We believe that if the city council is truly interested in improving the fire department's capability to fight fires, and if the city council is truly interested in protecting the lives, homes, and properties of all of its citizens and voters, the city council will reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Missy Kelly.
Hello, I'm Missy Kelly. Here we go. The Beechwood Canyon Neighborhood Association is holding firm to our commitment to the safety and well-being of hillside residents in Beechwood Canyon. We have informed the city departments...
Hold the mic.
Do you really want me to yell, Tom? I was doing so well quietly, and you were saved, but, okay. So, we have informed the city departments on many occasions over the years that we oppose any plan that moves firefighters away from hillside homes. Every neighborhood inside Fire Station 82 service area enjoys emergency response time of less than five minutes, except the Hollywood Hills. Prop F is clear when it promises that relocation of the fire station will improve response time. How does this plan do that exactly? We have a solution to the problem. Any new facility that is built for the components of a regional fire station, such as apparatus, storage, firefighter training, community meetings, et cetera, go forward with the current proposed plan to refurbish and redesign existing stations, keeping our firefighters there in the area closest to the hills. They're doing a fine job now where they are and could certainly use a more up-to-date facility. If they are moved further away to a location in gridlocked traffic, isn't this an unnecessary gamble with the lives and property of the people in the Hollywood Hills? We request that you take no action on this matter until the issue has been reviewed and heard before the Area Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Mr. Labonge?
Thank you very much, members. This has been a multiple-year project. As you know, shortly after six years, we have come up with a site. It is basically 500 feet from its existing site on Bronson Avenue, 500 feet. And I'm looking at all the neighbors there, 500 feet. I don't see any disagreement with that. It's 500 feet from that. And furthermore, too, if there is any salary savings, you bet we're going to try to use water and power land and relocate a station that will better serve the north in a Beechwood Canyon as well. I asked for an aye vote. I thank the Bureau of Engineering for the tremendous job they did over the years and the fire department, but most important, the people of all of Los Angeles that voted for this proposition that has allowed us to have new fire stations in districts throughout the city of Los Angeles. I, along with you, Mr. Garcetti, would love to have seen a large, a lot, similar to what other council districts have had, but we know the property in Hollywood is challenged, the cost factor, as well as we didn't want to relocate any housing. This will give the fire department a quick response to all of its district, and I ask for an aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. As our last speaker on the queue, so let's go ahead and open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 20, call special for cards from the public.
Okay, item number 20 is before us now. Zuma Dogg on item 20.
I only want to use a minute. Cut me off after a minute. This is very important. It's about the Motorola voice switch radios for the LAPD, and something that I wrote about on my zoomatimes.com blog is that LAPD's been working with faulty and outdated Motorola radios. There's been a lot of problems with them, and police, LAPD, they're forced to use their cell phones upon occasions to, you know, call in for backup and whatnot. So that not only puts the lives of the police officers at risk, but since they're there to enforce public safety, it puts the safety of the public at risk. And the good news is, for this $12.8 million contract extension, proposed amendment, it will not have any cost to the city. So I'd like to let... Oh, you let me talk over. So it's not going to have any cost to the city, and we need this because we can't have LAPD walking around having to use their cell phones because they have defective police Motorola equipment. And Motorola, get with the program, y'all. Will you do something? It's a public safety risk.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dogg. Do you want to be heard on this, Mr. Dowd?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Matt Dowd?
Yes, Mr. Labonge, you'll find out you don't have to fill in a card, and you don't have to provide your name even. But look, hands up all those people who took public transport to City Hall today, like the mayor said. Anybody except me, I took public transport today to City Hall because I care about congestion, I care about the environment, and I care about the problems in the city, but public transport, people don't want to take it because of the safety factor. You love to be safe in your little council, your city-paid-for vehicle, Mr. City Attorney. Did you bring the, take the bus or public transport today?
Please give us general public comments instead of addressing him.
So that's why this police radio dispatch system is important, because people want to know when they have a problem on public transport with any, you know, any kind of bad behavior that occurs in the city. They want to be able to get through to the police and have good police response time, and that's how it's related to the public transport.
That closes our general comments on these items, on this item, excuse me. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 22, call special for cards.
Mr. Dowd, if you'd like to come back for 22?
Yeah, this is another public safety committee, emergency operations center, another vital thing. Everyone lives in complacency. They think the big one's not coming, but there was a show on TV called Eli Stone on Monday night. They simulated an earthquake on the Golden Gate Bridge, and that was the story of the show. But believe it or not, in the Eli Stone Show, there's a character called Matt Dowd. They stole my identity, Hollywood.
If you could please address the emergency operations board.
Can we lay off the Matt Dowd identity? But anyway, this is important. The wildfires, homes are in, you know, in danger of being wiped out. It's all related to public safety, and I'm in favor of this one. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll close our public comment on this item. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 23, call special for cards from the public.
All right, we have Zuma Dogg and Matt Dowd.
First of all, it doesn't look like anyone in the city cares on TV 35. How come me and Matt are the only two people saying things? So come out to City Hall, please, and do some other items. Less Zuma Dogg and Matt, more other people, y'all. Item number 23, it's about the city of Los Angeles Emergency Preparedness Fair, and I'd like to have some items, some things that would be incorporated into the Emergency Preparedness Fair. How about an emergency density services? I think the city will be needing emergency density services because there's way too much density that's being built in this city without enough infrastructure, without enough police, without enough classroom size, without enough water, and without enough parking, and without enough everything. And what happens? What happens when we add more density to a city council? Oh, I can't ask you a question. Let me tell you what happens when you add density.
If we could keep to the city of Los Angeles Emergency Preparedness Fair, I understand you can...
There's a thing that I would like to have incorporated. Okay, so I think we need density prepared, emergency preparedness, because when you add density to the city, you have too many people in too close quarters, and that's when a lot of crime starts to happen. Just look at New York City. You can't put things down for a second and turn your back, or it's going to be gone. So look for a lot more crime and things like, crime and homelessness with all this. We have a lot of taxes that the city is putting on people, and a lot...
He doesn't appear to be on topic right now.
Well, maybe, maybe you don't appear so, but if you ask the people in the city, if you need emergency preparedness, this density problem in the city is going to be causing a lot of...
Sir, this is specifically, I... Mr. Dogg, Dogg? Mr. Dogg, please, if you will, lower your voice. This will be your last warning, sir. We have a very clear item here on emergency preparedness fair, and it's not about density.
And I had a very clear...
And sir, sir? And we give you the warning about that. We'd like you to keep your main to the subject, to be courteous to both the public and to everybody else here. Mr. Dowd is our next speaker.
Yeah, I'll respectfully yield. Thank you. I think it's covered. I won't be taking it, this one. Thanks, Eric.
That closes our public comment. Please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 25, call special for cards.
Okay, Matt Dowd is our next speaker on item 25.
Yep, this is an important one for me because I live at Venice Beach. I was trying to work at Venice Beach, so I'm worried about a tsunami creeping up on me. That's, this is an important thing. You only need to have a decent earthquake out in the Pacific Ocean somewhere, even though they tend to happen more northerly from here, up the Oregon and Washington coast and Alaska. This is something that needs to be looked at. I'm glad you've got some kind of plan on board now. I'm big on public safety, and I'm just, I just hope you've got a plan. The police know how to handle it because Venice is going to go underwater, especially the canals, and I don't know where Michael Hunt's going to vend when everybody's underwater.
Thank you. If we can open the roll on that item, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 26, call special for cards.
Okay, we have Michael Carrion. Mr. Carrion here? Not, Mr. Dowd, if you'd like to come forward on this one?
No, thanks, I'll wave.
Okay, that'll close the public hearing on this. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 27, call special for cards.
Mr. Dowd, 27? Going once, going twice? 27? Okay, he waves. So go ahead and open the roll on 27, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 30, call special for cards, and Mr. Zine called that special as well.
Okay. Mr. Zine, we have item 30 before us. Mr. Dowd, if you'd like to speak on that one?
Yep, that's what we're going to do. We have just one card on it. Yeah, I'll take a minute on this one. Attend to agree. Yeah, this is, this is, this is the woman who was let out by mistake, if I recall. She was paroled, or she's let out, and then they said, oh, wait a minute, that's another mistake, just like the illegal alien who got let out of county, and, you know. Anyway, I'm in favor of this. Let's make this resolution for the governor. Keep the real criminals in jail, and if they're illegal, get them out of the country. Don't be releasing them onto the street by mistake or on purpose.
Thank you. That'll close our general public comment on this item. Mr. Zine is on the queue. I do not have another one.
Mr. Repovich?
It is just being handed to me.
Thank you.
Peter Repovic?
That's him.
Pete Repovic.
Good afternoon. Do you want me to just go, councilman? I'm here representing the Los Angeles Police Protective League. We feel that in light of Sarah Jane Olsen's crimes, her 23 years of evading the law that she should be punished like everybody else, she attempted to kill two Los Angeles police officers. She did murder somebody else. And in light of all of that, I think it's very important to convince the governor of the state of California to keep her here in the jurisdiction of California to serve her sentence, and it should be a full sentence. She should not be allowed to go back to Minnesota. And that is what we believe is the Los Angeles Police Protective League Board of Directors on behalf of our Los Angeles police officers, men and women. Any questions, councilman? Thank you very much.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Repovich, Mr. Dowd, for speaking on this. Back in 1975, there was a situation occurred in the city of Los Angeles where an individual placed a pipe bomb under a police car at the parking lot of the IHOP Restaurant on Sunset Boulevard. A second bomb was placed under a police car at Hollenbeck Police Station. The individual who did these acts, Sarah Jane Olson, was a fugitive from justice for 23 years. In addition to that, prior to placing these bombs to kill Los Angeles police officers, she was involved in a murder of a bank customer in Carmichael, California. She changed her identity and fled and escaped justice for 23 years, ultimately apprehended and pled guilty to two counts of possessing explosives with intent to murder, and later convicted of the murder of the bank robbery. This individual was mistakenly released from prison, taken back into custody, and she's currently in custody. She's asked to be paroled to Minnesota. And what we're asking the governor to do is to keep her in this jurisdiction of California, in the system of justice in California, and let her do her time here in California. An individual that tries to kill four Los Angeles police officers, involved in a bank robbery where an innocent person is killed, who flees the jurisdiction for 23 years, changes her identity, and then is apprehended, we believe that person did all these acts knowingly, consciously, and that she should do her time here in California, do the rest of her sentence, and after that time be paroled and follow the procedures as prescribed by law. So we're asking, does this body support the members of the LAPD to stand up for the officers that protect our citizens and show our strength that people who try to kill police officers and kill innocent people at a bank should not be released from custody and not be paroled without doing their full sentence in the jurisdiction where it occurred? And this motion, this resolution is asking for this body to support that, urge the governor to keep her here in the penal system in the state of California. That's the request, that's the resolution, as supported by the representative body of the Los Angeles Police Department, the Police Protectively. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Zine. Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank Mr. Zine for introducing this motion. I think it is a, it is a fairly unusual and unique motion, but it's warranted by fairly unusual and unique circumstances. And it's not an ordinary thing for this council, or indeed, I bet you, Mr. Zine, for any council in the state to make such a request to the governor. It's just not, I've never seen, six and a half years we've been here, I've never seen it done. But if we're going to do it, we ought to do it in this case. There ought to be a very clear message sent. If you're a cop killer, or if you're an attempted cop killer, the state of California will make absolutely no accommodations for you. At every stage in the process, if you're someone who tries to kill a cop, the state should send you a very strong message that you are never going to be cut a break. And that's what your message, that's what your motion does, Mr. Zine, and I applaud you for that.
I just want to add, Mr. President, one more thing, that the reason these pipe bombs didn't explode and kill these police officers is that the clothespin, when it, the car was moved, the clothespin didn't close as it was supposed to for the bombs to activate. And if those bombs had activated, there would be four dead police officers, and they would be on the wall, the memorial wall. And fortunately, through the grace of God, those bombs did not explode. So that would be the request. Thank you, Mr. Weiss, for your comments on this. And, Mr. President, I hope this is a unanimous vote to show our support for the men and women who protect us and risk their lives every day for the people of this city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. With that, we'll go ahead and open the roll on this resolution, close the roll and tabulate the vote. Ten ayes, that is approved. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item thirty-one, call special for cards from the public.
Okay, Matt Dowd on item number thirty-one. Then we'll go out to Van Nuys, and Sharon Brewer will be our next speaker. You have, I think, one minute left.
Yeah, can I, how much do I have left?
One minute, sir.
One? Okay, yeah, see, Channel 35, people watching, can somebody come down and help us out? They only give me six minutes. I'm trying to hold up the whole city of Los Angeles with Zooma Dogg with public comment. We're trying to expose the shadiness, we're trying to look through these agendas and these pages.
If you could please address the item that is before us.
And here's one that's three pages full. Can I have some microphone? I can't even hear myself with all the chatter.
We can hear you well, sir.
Well, I can hear myself. That's, I'm asking that I can hear it. Anyway, fill the boot campaign. See, some of these are good, but here's some bad ones on here. They're, they're, they're almost—see? I've only got 15 seconds left to go through 30 fee waivers that are costing thousands. I'm going to have to let the girls from Van Nuys, girls, I'm with you, take them to task on this one. This is a bad one today.
Thank you. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker. After that will be Zooma Dogg and Michael Carrion.
Hi, Sharon Brewer, item number thirty-one, special event fee waivers. We have 18 today, 13 with amounts, $55,946.18. We have eight after the fact, approximately $36,651. I refer to Council File 052467-S1 that says the special event motions need to be approved by the council prior to the date of each event for liability reasons. Approved motions trigger the city's liability insurance coverage for the events and provide authorization for street closures, temporary parking restrictions, and related actions associated with the special events. Some of the events that are on today's large amount, $10,023 for the annual march honoring Iman Liano Zapata, sorry about the name, $7,886 for Thai New Year Festival, $8,313 LA versus war art exhibit, $16,110, another Thai New Year Day event. When it comes to one of the items, H, which is the 7,886, I just want to let you know that streets are closed, but it's not listed in the motion. I also want to speak on number 32 and 34 because they're both special event fee waivers.
Can we wait till those are before us?
I didn't put a card in for them.
I'll make sure I'll call you on those ones, okay? If you just sit down for a second.
Anyway, obviously with the problems with the budget, we need to stop waiving the fees. Again, $55,946.18 for today's fee waivers. Thank you.
Thank you. Zooma Dogg is our next speaker. After that is Michael Carrion.
Yes, special event fee waivers, of course, that's the thing that somebody here at City Hall told me to look out for when I first came into this council. Someone pulled me over here that works for City Hall and said it's the biggest scam going. It's a way that they fund—here's what special event fees are supposed to be for. If you have, if you want to have like a neighborhood community event where maybe you have a church or a school group or something local, and, you know, there's associated costs with the city, things like trash removal, maybe some police or whatever, so they'll waive the fees for this so that the community can have their small things, events that are open to the public and free with community benefit. And I know that there has been concern in council that there has been abuse, because when you waive a fee of, when you waive these fees, you're essentially making a contribution to this, to these people, and, and so— Dude, what are you doing, bro? I'm trying to talk here. So anyway, these are supposed to be open to the public, community benefit events that don't charge fees. And what's happening is for things like, you know, like Grammy parties and the Dick Clark American Music Awards and Dodger Stadium and things like this, sports teams and all types of commercial broadcasting conglomerates. And then what do you think happens when you call your council district and say you have a Brownie Festival for the kids that you want to have? Can you waive it at the church? They say, oh, we don't have any more money to do that, we just gave $20,000 to Dick Clark. Okay? So we also have a $500 to $700 million budget crisis in the city. And if you want to, as Zooma Dogg, the first thing to go, the one thing even Maritonio and I agree on, is that these need to be cut back. Y'all are crazy. You're sitting here trying to make belt tightening measures? Let me tell you, a bunch of belt tightening that comes through every day is called shady special event fee waivers. It's time to cut them out for a $500 million budget deficit crisis. Zoomatimes.com.
Thank you, Mr. Dogg. Michael Carrion is our next speaker. Is he no longer here? All right, we will close the public comment on that item. Please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item thirty-two, call special for cards.
Okay, Ms. Brewer, did you want to talk about item thirty-two? Van Nuys?
Yes, I just figured we'd, I'd save time by not going and making them special.
Thank you, I appreciate that, but—
Anyway, item number thirty-two is another special event fee waiver. It's for May 6th. And the fee waiver is for $5,000. It's for the youth holocaust commemoration at the, at Pan Pacific Park. The only thing that I was doing again is just putting it in with the other fee waivers that were there, because you also had another one that was for the same event for 2,020, or $2,325. So again, it's just another fee waiver that the city's waiving, and again, we need to take and stop waiving these fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. And also for the record, Mr. Dowd had a card in for this one. We'll close our general public comment on this. If we can please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item thirty-three, call special for cards.
I believe, Mr. Dogg, you've also hit the six-minute limit, the city attorneys—
He's had his five minutes.
Five minutes, excuse me, I'm sorry. So that we have, we'll close the public hearing on thirty-three. Go ahead and open the roll, please, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. And the same on item thirty-nine. If anybody wishes to be heard from council on that? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on thirty-nine. And, no, I'm sorry, unfortunately, can't today, sorry. And tabulate the vote, please.
Ten ayes.
Thank you, that is approved. We have two special items, Mr. City Attorney. Okay, all right, so we take up the first special?
First special is presented by Councilmember Perry, and the maker of the motion will speak to the findings.
Okay, Ms. Perry, if you'd like to speak to the findings on this item. I know that the—why don't we hold this one, let's take the other one?
The second special is by Councilmember Parks, and the maker of the motion will also speak on that one.
All right. We will hold those on the desk. After this, we'll be going into closed session on the items that are of a legal nature, and under California state law, we're allowed to go into executive session to concern, to address those. We will come back into open session if we need to. Ms. Perry, if you'd like to address the findings on your special?
Yes, thank you very much. And, and I'm sorry, Mr. President, I stepped away from my chair for a second. Have we voted on the making the findings?
We need the findings to be made by you, the city attorney.
Okay, great, all right, that's great. On March 5th of 2008, the council approved a motion that authorized a city engineer to accept a deposit of $14,000 to complete a feasibility study for structural foundation modification as proposed by the Old Church LLC for Main Street Parking Motor Transport Division at 260 South Main Street, LA. The Bureau of Engineering has completed its study and has determined it's feasible to modify the foundation of the motor transport division. And so I'm asking for a Rule 23 motion today to authorize the city engineer to accept $600,000 from Old Church LLC for deposit and to the Engineering Special Services Fund entitled MSP MTD Green Rooftop for the proposed change of scope to the MTD. It is necessary to introduce and adopt this motion today in order to proceed with the work in a timely way and to not cause cost overruns or budget overruns or any further delays to the projects. And that's why I ask for your support pursuant to Rule 23.
Thank you. On the findings, anybody else? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on the findings, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Pursuant to Council Rule 23 for emergency motions, that is before us. Nobody wishes to be heard on the substance. I think it's been laid out well by Ms. Perry. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. We'll send that forthwith without objection. And Mr. Parks on special number two, if you could make the findings, please?
Yes, I'd ask that we support a Rule 23 in the fact that we, we believe that this requires immediate action and also that it's come to our attention since the agenda was posted, and much of this information came out of a Board of Supervisors meeting yesterday.
Thank you very much. On the findings, anybody else wish to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on the findings, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that is before us. And on the issue, Mr. Parks?
On the issue, colleagues, what I'd ask is that we support this resolution because, as we all know, MLK Hospital is closed, it's displaced about 50,000 emergency room patients throughout eight or 10 other hospitals. It's impacting our paramedics in that it increases the amount of time for them to find a location for medical care. It also increases their time of placement once they find the facility. When we think about the 700,000 people that are in the care area, of which many of them are indigent and also may not have insurance, we also know that there are significant health issues in the area of the service for MLK. Diabetes rates are 44% higher than the rest of the counter, county. Hypertension is up 24% higher, HIV/AIDS is 38% higher, asthma is about 11%. Infant mortality is 20% higher, but for African Americans, 40%. There is no real clear picture for this area for dealing with long-term plans for emergency trauma services, inpatient services, and primary care and specialty. This motion asks two things, that the governor take a leadership role in hopes that he can influence the UC system to bring all of their weight to bear on this issue, to assist the county in getting the MLK hospital emergency rooms reopened. We also are asking the governor to place his considerable weight behind the issue of when we begin to negotiate the next contract with the federal government that deals with Medicare, that the, the Medi-Cal, that the California get a much better deal than currently. It's my understanding that we get about 20%, 20 cent on the dollar dealing with these medical instances. So we ask a unanimous vote in sending this direction in hope that we can support the efforts of the Board of Supervisors in attempting to open MLK Hospital.
Thank you. Mr. Sax, did you want to be heard on this one? Why don't you just come forward, and we'll fill the card out right afterwards. On special number two?
Thank you, Arnold Sax. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate Councilman Parks putting forward this motion, but I would like to mention that it's only two years too late. The figures that he promoted in the motion relating to the illnesses that are caused, that occur in the area that's affected by MLK are illnesses, are figures that were in effect when the hospital was opened. The motion should have been made to be, what is the County Board of Supervisors doing when the hospital was open? What plan did they have in effect? They had something called the Metro Plan, which was a plan that was no plan. Where was the city council in making action then? Now the County Board of Supervisors is grasping at straws. Now you're going to make noise? Too little, too late. Tell your constituents, well, you were too busy, you weren't paying attention, it wasn't under your jurisdiction, we didn't have anything to do with it. Tell them something else, but tell them the truth for a change. Thank you for your time and your answers.
Thank you. And I think the council file index has about four different resolutions and a number of rallies and other items and hearings that were held here in City Council on this issue specifically. Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I rise to, you know, really, I really appreciate and thanks, thank Mr. Parks for what he's doing. So many of us, so many of us, if we have health insurance and benefits, we really don't recognize the importance or the need of county facilities and the roles that they play where it relates to protecting human lives. I, for one, received that one telephone call that no parent wants to hear at 5:00 in the morning indicating that two of my sons were in a tragic car accident. One of, one of my sons, Herb III, almost died. He was in intensive care, and he was taken to the King Drew Medical Center where, thank God, they saved their lives. But you don't walk around every day thinking, I mean, my son's had insurance like everyone else. You figure if they're sick, you go to Kaiser, you go Blue Cross, Blue Shield, or whatever. But this health problem is everybody's problem. It is not a— It is not a poor people problem. So I commend Mr. Parks for urging the governor, who I had an opportunity to work with for over a year. And I believe that he is sensitive to this issue and will do all that he can. The UC system is the perfect system to bring forth the resources and the expertise that we need to ensure that we have a health net system that protects all Los Angelinos. And that's what we are fighting for. So, Mr. Parks, I agree with you. My colleagues, Mr. Cardness and Mr. Alicon could speak to the fact that California never received the reimbursement that we deserve. In fact, I would guess that if you looked at our voting record, you would find that the three of us were always urging for a larger share from the federal government. So I'm glad that, that at least you realize that this is not just a county concern. This is a city concern. This is a people concern. So I'm glad that you afforded me the opportunity to second the motion, and we should move on this, Mr. President, quickly, and see if we can't get the governor engaged so he can use all of his skills and all of his talent to try to help us fill a huge void. So I thank you for this, Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll on this item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Uh, well, next we're going into closed session. Colleagues, before we do that, we continue, we received and filed number forty-one on items forty, forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four. Is there anybody who would like those to go into closed session? For forty-five, we do need to go. But is there anybody who would object to taking those votes in open session right now? Mr. Wesson?
Oh, I don't know how we do this, since we already acted on Mr. Parks's motion, but I, I do want to say, I just looked up in the audience, and Felicia Brad, wave at the council. It was her brother, who was a surgeon, that saved my son's life. And I just looked up, and there you were.
Thank you.
Her brother did that.
It's always a pleasure to see you here in council chambers. So if there's no objection, let's take items forty first. Do we, should we go through each one, Mr. City Attorney? Okay, item forty, please.
Uh, the first item is item number forty, and that's settlement on the case of Munoz et al. versus City et al., and that's an amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right. If there's nobody who wishes to be heard on that, let's go ahead and open the roll on the suggested settlement. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is forty-two, is a workers' comp claim, Sterling versus City of L.A., and the amount is one fifty-eight, one twenty-five, plus a life pension thereafter of one fifty, seventy-five per week.
Thank you. Uh, nobody wishes to be heard on that? Let's go ahead and take the proposed settlement there. Please open the roll and close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved as well. Item forty-three, please.
Item forty-three is also a workers' comp claim, Steve Linder versus City of L.A., and that's fifteen percent permanent in the amount of thirteen thousand, fifty dollars, eighty-two percent permanent in the amount of one twenty-two, nine thirty-five, plus a life pension thereafter of eighty-five oh four.
Okay. Anybody wishing to be heard on the Linder case? If not, let's go ahead and take the proposed settlement. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Item number forty-four?
And that, I believe, is the last one in open session, Flynn versus City of L.A., and that's also a workers' comp. Uh, and that settlement is in the amount of one hundred thousand, one sixty-five.
Okay. Any council members wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on that settlement. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Those are approved. Um, if we can now go into closed session in accordance with California state law to discuss item number forty-five. We thank the members of the public who have been here for this meeting, and, uh, we will go into open session if there's any action that it needs to be announced there. Thank you, and we'll be back.